And we're having all the teachers set goals that are smart. They're called smart goals. Specific, measurable, attainable, results-oriented, and time-bound. And your whole district just did this yesterday. You set a whole bunch of goals. That's going to be incredible. And then each school can tap into these goals and we can measure how we're doing. Go ahead. We ran something last spring with Mount Vernon High School, just on reciprocal teaching, and we saw a school-wide gain. So we're measuring everything. We're raw-raing every time we see good data. And we're getting teachers quite involved in the new practices. Go ahead. This fall, this week, we're about to finish up another fall initiative where we're gathering pre- and post-data. We'll have all the post-data coming up in the next couple of weeks to see how this whole fall initiative has been with some of these new strategies in our shifts that we're working on, instructional shifts. We, in addition, did professional development for teachers last summer. And again, this week, we're doing math professional development. We've been working on rigor. And we have seen, I have to say, incredible excitement from teachers in this district. And the fact that Gail, she didn't say, but her sessions that she's offering after school, how many people did you have sign up? Come on, tell me.
We have a wait list of 90 teachers.
These 90 teachers are coming without being paid. They're coming to learn all of the shifts and everything that's going on. So the excitement in this district is, you can feel it. It's very, very fun. Thank you. I have time for questions if you want any questions. Okay? All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I know that we're being taped. But thank you for that. I know we're being taped, so I think it's important that I reread some of the statements I made earlier this evening. But let me just start by reminding people that this past August was the 50th anniversary of the March on Washington. And at that time, the President said, "We can stand together for the right of every child to get an education that stirs the mind and captures the spirit and prepares them for the world that awaits them. But it also teaches us that the promise of this nation will only be kept when we work together." August 1963, I am a young college student on that bus on a jury that has yet to be completed with a nation of people of my own tribe who fight ourselves within ourselves instead of coming together as a people. So I'm going to read the statement that I read earlier this morning, this evening. "One's dignity may be assaulted, vandalized, cruelly mocked, but it can never be taken away unless it is surrendered." And so now, what I want to do is bring you some of the outcomes that we're hoping for. And let's go to the slide that says intended outcomes. "We are committed to the moral intent that frames the Common Core Standards Movement. Schools must be accountable for ensuring all students, regardless of their socioeconomic status, are successful graduates. We are committed to producing a literate generation of talented adults capable of supporting the tenets of a democracy as declared in our Constitution. We are committed to the continuous improvement that includes setting annual achievement targets for each student. We're committed to understanding that teachers and principals must be members of a robust learning community. We understand we must motivate and inspire students to see the connection between school and the rest of their lives. We must remember that Mount Vernon is a village responsible for raising all of its children." I'd like to go to the epilogue, which talks about civility. You all have a copy of civility. I'm not going to read all three quotes. I'm trying, I think I'll take the first one. "Civility means a great deal more than just being nice to each other. It is complex. It encompasses learning how to connect successfully and live well with others, developing thoughtfulness and fostering effective self-expression and communication. Civility includes courtesy, politeness, mutual respect, fairness, good manners, as well as a matter of good health. Taking an active interest in the well-being of our community and concerns for the health of our society is also involved in civility. It may be too much to expect an academic setting that we should all agree, but it's not too much to expect disciplined and unvarying civility." Thank you very much tonight for this. We can see what we're soon to do in several weeks with the analysis of what happens at the secondary school level. And that ends the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Johnson. That was, and everyone else who presented, that was very informative. I was glad to have been able to listen to all of it. At this time, I think we're going to move into the voting of the resolutions.
We need a resolution.
We need a resolution, yes.
Mr. Goodson.
I would like to distribute the proposed resolution and a commentary of my own. There's enough here to distribute to the community.
When does the public speak? I'm sorry. When does the public speak?
It's probably 8:00.
Oh, you guys changed the procedures around here?
Excuse me. I gave out an email that I got from Kate Davis. The email to me and to Ms. Crump and Ms. Walker and to some other people that are not on the unit. It says, and it's in response to a subject, Mount Vernon School Chief caught stealing from taxpayers. And the email to me says, "Okay, if everyone is on the up and up, doing the right thing, how are they, these things out there? Why are, do we pay someone to make us all look like we have all, our heads in the same? Our taxes are high and going higher because we sit back and let stupid things like this happen? And why is she that physician getting over 260K? This is part of the problem. We are paying people a lot of money for what? More scandals? When is Mount Vernon going to get there, act right, and stop giving News 12 on the gold platter or something to report?" And this is from somebody that says Sister Kate. "Trust him larger with all your heart and lean not unto your own understanding in all your ways and knowledge him, and he shall direct your path." And my response to the email is this, but then I would also like to give it out one more time, because I gave you a one-sided document and I want to give you the two sides. My side of that email says, "Sent in blackmail, extortion, intimidation, and bullying. If you are aware," and this is to everybody, but it was an email to Kate Davis, but I've decided I'd make it public so nobody could distort something I might say. "If you are aware of any specific allegations that are factual rather than unsupported claims of the current accuser, please bring them forward for the trustees to review. I am of the opinion that we have a remarkable opportunity with the current interim superintendent and the next one to make the sweeping changes in our district that we have all been seeking for many years. I am perturbed and disturbed by people who represent themselves as devout, who seem to have no problem believing scurrilous claims about our interim superintendent, who has received a competitive salary of $220,000 from the Mount Vernon City School District after refusing an additional $40,000 that had been offered for the purpose of supporting an arts and drama program in the district. She has a national Assistant Secretary of Education under President Clinton and statewide reputation during a time when the district is seeking applications for a permanent superintendent. Our interim superintendent came out of retirement to reboot this district. Given that her current contract will end on June 30, 2014, as agreed by extension last April, the only impact of the current malicious effort is to detrimentally impact on our effort to re-energize this district and identify the next superintendent. If you wish to know more about my opinion on the current effort to malign our school district, please let me know. I am okay meeting and speaking with anyone with an open mind. I am not okay with people who feel that the best way to destroy our district is to destroy people's reputations by stating lies as if they are facts. And the definition of the adjective scurrilous is making or spreading scandalous claims about someone with the intention of damaging their reputation." And now this is my resolution on the back of what I just gave out, offered by trustee Elias Gooseide, November 6, 2013, which I'm permitted to do. And I'll ask for a second if there's one, and I'm going to ask that to be added to the table. I have three resolutions. Be resolved that the President of the Board of Trustees, along with the Board Attorney, are directed to bring all allegations of wrongdoing pertaining to the conduct of school district administrators, employees, trustees, independent contractors, or consultants to the Mount Vernon City School District found on the website blog located an official message from the City of Mount Vernon, mountvernunexposed@gmail.com@mail100.us2rsgsvnet. On behalf of official message from the City of Mount Vernon, mountvernunexposed@gmail.com and on any Facebook blog or website of Samuel Rivers, Mount Vernon Exposed, or the Black Political Caucus of Westchester Incorporated, to the attention of the Federal Bureau of Investigation and United States Attorney's Offices that cover the City School District of Mount Vernon, New York. Also bring it to the Investigator General and Commissioner of the New York State Education Department, Westchester County District Attorney, and the Office of the New York State Attorney General and the New York State Office of the Controller, with a view toward obtaining a comprehensive, independent review of all allegations and determine whether any improprieties, criminal conduct, or other misfeasance or malfeasance has occurred as a result of knowing or intentional conduct of any individual holding any of the district titles previously identified in this paragraph. That's number one. Number two, be resolved that the President of the Board of Trustees, along with the Board Attorney, are directed to bring all allegations pertaining to the conduct of school district administrators, employees, trustees, independent contractors, or consultants made on the record on Wednesday, November 6, 2013, during the community comment phase of the regular board meeting of the Mount Vernon City School District, to the attention of the Federal Bureau of Investigation, United States Attorney's Offices that cover the City School District of Mount Vernon, New York, the Investigator General, Commissioner of the New York State Education, Department of Westchester County District Attorney, and the Office of the New York State Attorney General and the New York State Office of the Controller, with a view toward obtaining a comprehensive, independent review of all allegations and determine whether any improprieties, criminal conduct, or other misfeasance or malfeasance has occurred as a result of knowing or intentional conduct of any individual holding any of the district titles previously identified in this paragraph. And then the third one is be resolved that the President of the Board of Trustees, along with the Board Attorney, are directed to seek from all the aforementioned entities an assessment as to whether the threat against the President of the Board of Retribution, should he not do what was directed of him on the website, against the interim superintendent and Assistant Superintendent of Business and one of the trustees of this board, is an extortionate act of a criminal nature.
Wow.
And I bring that up and I put it on the table, understanding that people have advised during the course of community comment that we should be nice to each other and we should demonstrate for the community that we can act in comedy. This stuff has not been brought to the attention of the board by members of this board, but by folks on, in our community, by an individual, at least one, who has telephoned everybody in our community about who we are and what we do. And I believe there's an anti-bullying policy in the district, and I believe that anti-bullying policy should be demonstrated to our community and our children, as applying not only to other children, not only to our teachers and our staff, but to members of our administration and our trustees. I am very upset because we are looking for a superintendent. And who the hell would work here after what we're doing to this one?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Yes.
Attorney's, if I may, if I may, if I may, if you need to review.
I'm ready. I'll second it. It's bound.
I did not give you permission to take your camera and to take all our pictures.
It's a public building, ma'am.
No, it's not. I am not a public, whatever you want.
You're interrupting the meeting now, ma'am. Thank you.
I would like to say that this night, this evening, to the contrast between the presentations, excellent, the things that this district is stepping, that it's stepping out to do and seeing evidence of it, this is the kind of thing that I had hoped for. This is the kind of thing that I knew that Mrs. Johnson would bring to our district. And I'm grateful to the other administrative staff that had joined her in this effort. And to know that all of it will transcend to what happens to our children and what will pave the way for our adults that will be taking our places in years that are too short, but it will happen. And so our job here tonight, and it has been all year and last year, our job is to prepare for the future. It's not about us now. Most of us have all of what we are about to, or what we have got. But our main job is to prepare the future citizens. And we cannot do it if we take time out, if we take time out to talk negatively about and to our board members. You know, I sat here tonight and we were told to get it together, and we're working to make that happen. We might disagree on things, but I wasn't aware that we were so apart, except that there are people in the community who evidently have nothing constructive to do, so they spend their time working to, where is the money going, the budget? I think that was mentioned a couple of times. So what I propose, and I sent an email to all of you guys earlier, is we have a forensic audit done, and I think that will take the cloud off of everyone's head of the suspicion of someone stealing. You know, Mr. Stuckey filed for some things, you know, that we probably need to know. You know, this is in his file. So why don't we have an independent investigator invest, or research our budget, our books, or whatever? Can I get a vote on that?
You know what? Is there discussion on the, you have a vote?
Sure. I mean, you know, it's open on the floor.
I mean, this is, this is what's been going on in the community. I mean, I think that's what people are concerned about.
Well, I think there are individuals who like to make allegations without factual concern for the facts. And I think that what has been alleged as facts are of criminal nature and that the place that crimes are reported are to the police, and they're prosecuted by prosecutors, and they're investigated by investigator generals. And people who engage in intimidation are engaged in extortion practices, and those are crimes as well. And I think everybody should be investigated for what has happened here, how our community was abused by the intimidation that went on. If anyone lives in town and got those phone calls, you know what I'm talking about. And I don't think we should tolerate bullies. And it is a crime. If anyone on this board committed the crimes that were alleged, any of the administrators committed the crimes that were alleged, open the books. Everybody should look at it. But it should be an official thing, and somebody should go to jail. I have no problem with what Ms. Saunders is saying, but let's make it everybody gets looked at. I have no problem with buildings and grounds and everybody else taking a look at what everybody does. Because very frankly, this board, this school district has been under that bank of fine glass for the last 20 years regardless. Okay? It's not news that we would have an audit from Auburn. It's not news, excuse me. And it just seems to me that if the allegations from the community, because I don't believe they came from the community, they came from particular individuals that would stand behind a superintendent with a camera the size of his head and intimidate the hell out of her just by standing in her face and think that the rest of us don't notice that he's doing that. And that that's not intimidation. I don't know what is. And if I'm not intimidating, I won't be intimidated. I will call it the way I see it, because that's what I have always done here. And you could call me any name you want, Mr. Rivers, and I will stand up to you every single time.
Can I respond? He called me out.
No, I didn't call you out.
You said my name.
I asked you as somebody who's put your name on my face.
I'll call you out. And I'm not afraid to do it.
You're free to do whatever you want. It's a public, free country.
I will.
But I'm not talking to you right now.
Okay. Trustee Saunders, do you have any further things to say about the audit? The good side is right. You know, forensic audit would be good, but it'll cost a lot of money and take a lot of time. Okay?
Well, if this has been allegations for, let's say, 20 years, so let's put a news out.
Not allegations for 20 years. There have been audits of this district every year. There are required audits of this district every year.
So, excuse me, I'm not sure if trustee Saunders is asking as trustee Gooseide did, if she's asking that a resolution be put together for a forensic, an independent forensic audit? Is that what you're asking?
I don't have a resolution.
Audit of what?
Audit of all the accusations that we have. We have contracts, you know, Mr. Stuckey presented his contracts for the last three years.
That's covered by my second resolution. Any testimony before the board?
Do you have any questions?
I'm not asking for any audit at all. I'm asking you to make it to the criminal justice system. And that's covered.
Can you speak into the mic? We want to hear you.
That's fine.
Okay. Trustee Trump, you had something else.
Can I hear you say, give me the microphone, please.
Ms. Walker suggested we go down to the tabs at hand.
Of course, of course.
Yes, but Ms. Trump was recognized. Yeah, Ms. Crump was recognized, so I was getting it back to her.
So I just wanted to make sure I understood what trustee Saunders was asking. In previous conversations with the board, I believe what she had asked, that a forensic audit of the budget, an independent forensic audit of the budget be done of the school district budget. I believe that's what she asked for, not in reference to what trustee Gooseide, the things that she was naming on trustee Stuckey's foil, I think Mr. Gooseide has covered. Trustee Gooseide has covered in his asking criminal investigation be done and be done by the people that he named, hired up that does criminal investigation. I think what trustee Saunders is asking, if the board will take a vote on an independent forensic audit being done of the budget as another thing of being more transparent to the community and one thing for all, settling about the $20 million or whatever the fund is, the balance, just putting everything to rest that we can move forward clearly with, hopefully, the individuals that trustee Gooseide has mentioned will take that up and do what they need to do there. And then with the forensic audit piece of the budget, and I think that that should cover everything. And we got our asbestos reports and investigation going on. I think we're fully covered now in reference to all of the allegations. I think that's what is what she's asking.
Excuse me. I believe there might be some additional things. We need to look at the nucleus of this entire situation, and that includes school board elections. That's a topic that I believe could come under investigation as well, because that's where influence, influence, if it is to be, perhaps comes to the floor of this board. And I would hope that everybody who runs for this board, anyone, is capable of making good educational decisions for the children of this city and not necessarily have to get from the so-called community. The community is represented. When they put you here, the community has confidence in you. They will support you. But you cannot go out and come back with a part of the community that has a special agenda. I believe it is time for us to stop playing around with what's in our hands and for which we are responsible.
I just wanted to add something. You know, I've heard a couple of people, when they intervene, talk about how we act as a board divided, you know, whatever. But I haven't seen it since being here, since, you know, July 1st, I believe, with all this talk, you know, with composure most of the time, and we've had discussions of all the issues. And we were really focusing on the real issues of the board, of the school district, which are children in poverty, not performing in the schools. And I hate to say this, we are being diverted from the real issues, whatever it is, whatever be out there, people might be doing things wrong. You know, we can do that, but however, you are elected to work on children. We're here because of the children. I'm transgressively saying, we wake up every day, come to school, it's because of the children. Otherwise, you would not have a job. Now, what are the real issues? We are about to hire a superintendent who's probably, if he investigates or she investigates, he's not going to come to Mount Vernon. We are about to hire, we want to have people in instruction, you know, in a superintendent, head of instruction. We haven't been able to do it for the past few years. Taxes are being raised because of the need of the school district. But do you really know why? Does everybody really know why? 80% of the budget is taken by, what is 80% of the budget taken by in this district? Salaries. Salaries and benefits to school teachers and administrators. Where were we as a school district when we allowed administrators to get overtime for instructors in the past, you know, in the past contract? And the more we go, next year is going to be another 18% added to the budget regardless, even if we vote for no budget. Why? Because of the teacher's contract. I was a teacher before, and I know how it is as teachers, what it is to be in a classroom and teach. The most difficult thing, the most difficult aspect of education is being in that classroom and trying to move these students from level three to level four, or level one to level two. It's difficult for every single person to be there. You have to sacrifice. And I believe these teachers do sacrifice their time, their energy all the time. However, we need to bring them to the table with a positive attitude and discuss with them, "Look, you are bankrupting the city." And that's the issue. It's not them bankrupting the city, it's the contract. And they agree to it, and they're not going to leave it, but at least we come and discuss it publicly. We don't.
That's not true.
You know, that is what it is. We come and discuss it, if not publicly, but if you look at the facts and the numbers, that's what's been going on. When I'm allowed as a teacher to start at level seven A, or level one K, and then in five years or seven years to have a 30%, 36% raise, you know, at some point, you know, we need to reason, we need to say, and this is a major issue, and I'm sorry, I'm bringing this forward, because I've been looking at it. I've been looking at the steps for the teacher. I'm not saying, "Yes, don't pay them." I'm saying, "Yes, come back and discuss it." Otherwise, what's going to happen? We're going to continue losing these houses for foreclosure. These are the real issues. What we're discussing here, we have a superintendent who put in $40,000 of a salary, you know, in order to save some arts program. We need to restructure Davis Middle School. Why? Because it's under capacity use, 59%. We have 35% of non-miller. So a building that only uses 34% of its capacity, what are we going to do? And then we have another high middle elementary school, Lincoln, at 144% capacity. And we pay a church because we're moving the students there. These are the real issues we've been trying to move and discuss. You know, and these are the things that need to be looked at. Perhaps what we can do is create a high school of excellence, like other cities have, those middle schools. those middle schools of excellence. We have to start looking at these things, you know? And we have, we try to hire the best principals, the best people for education, and yet we continue this narrative, they're going to leave because nobody wants to be punished. Perhaps if we stop the postal attacks and focus on the real issues, now, I'm not attacking the teachers' union. Again, I'm an educator, I belong to the union, but when I look at it and I look at other cities, we are forty-six in generating revenues for the district, and forty-six districts in Westchester, and yet we are fourteen in terms of what we pay our teachers. So we can, I'm just asking for fairness. And I'm not calling it out again, I know how hard it is to be in that classroom and struggle. What Mr. Walker was describing, these kids coming out of schools, there are ways to deal with that. She's right. Now, how? We need the community on board, the community organizations. We need to educate these children after school, set up programs, sports programs, adult chess programs, activities after school, where do you keep them in the school, in other places? And these are the things we've been trying to actually do. So please, let's put this investigation out of the window. I'm not saying let's not do it. We can still proceed with it, as we are publicly, we are using public funds. However, you know, again, we are not dividing. I think we all work together, you know, very well, and we're trying to look at these issues, you know, in a very professional manner. So I think there is a way of change in the district. And again, I've been elected because I believe in that thing that we put forward, that challenge that we put forward, to stop the raise of the taxes, so I've been looking at these numbers, and I'm a number person, so I know what I'm talking about. If you need to discuss, please, you know, let's go on and discuss these facts, but these are facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. May. Trustee Walker, did you have a comment that you want to make?
Yeah, we're on part six of the agenda voting on the resolutions. So please go for the resolutions, and then we can talk about the other resolutions.
I would love to move forward on the vote, the resolutions at hand. And then the new resolutions.
President White said, I would like to have number nineteen. Have number nineteen.
No, no, no. The first walk-in resolution that I presented to the board.
The last one.
Yes. We discussed it on Monday, if you give us a hard copy.
The only, my only suggestion, the only resolution that requested that you hold in summary of today that's not in executive session. There were three, there were three resolutions that we intended on pulling, and that was buildings and grounds. Okay? So because we addressed the policy issues. The only one I could respect, that was the only one I was comfortable with, HR nineteen. But just because you hold it doesn't mean it's executive session. I mean, so we can vote the tabs and we discuss nineteen after the vote.
Okay.
But I am going to request that number four.
Forty-four?
Yes.